Where you live, the environment, the air you breathe, all those things that affect our health, but also mentally where you are, emotional well-being, and also socially where you are, again, those factors that really affect your access to resources and good public health. So every day we are exploring a new theme. Let me pop those up on the screen. I'm not going to go into all of them, but we are posting information on social media for every day, telling you a little bit more about how we're dealing with this in Sedgwick County. I do want to call attention to one theme on Tuesday, recognizing our public health workforce. And I think we can all agree that after two years of COVID, they really deserve a big kudos. Their hard work and dedication has really made a difference in the community. And I wanted to bring up just one recent example of teamwork. Our Spring Festival of Friendship was just April 1st and April 2nd, and that was a big vaccine clinic over two days at the former city library, had a big crowd, and we had a lot of people lined up waiting to get those shots. We had about 60 to 65 workers every day, ready to give those vaccinations and look at the results. Over a thousand vaccine doses given, 110 of those were first-time doses, so we're especially excited about that. And we, to put that into perspective, how busy our folks were, they gave about 70 vaccines every hour, all day long on Friday, about 60 vaccine doses every hour on Saturday, all day long. So it took a lot of teamwork, but again, it was well organized, it was well executed, and so kudos to our public health team. So as Public Health Week continues the rest of this week, I'd encourage you to go to our social media page, and you can check that out on Sedgwick County Government. We'll have daily listings, some information, and of course, we love it if you like it and share it because it helps spread the word. Any questions?
I don't see any. Thank you, Stephanie, for bringing that information to us. We appreciate it.
You bet. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Stephanie. We appreciate that. The Sedgwick County Zoo never ceases to amaze us, from its world-class travel and exhibits to the recent completion of the brand-new entrance. Sedgwick County Zoo is proud to announce the opening of Stingray Cove. This interactive exhibit will allow visitors to get up and close and hands-on with stingrays and small sharks. We would like to show this video, and then after the video, Chairman Dennis, I'll turn it over to you, sir.
Thank you, Akeem.
Experience Sedgwick County Zoo's newest interactive exhibit, Stingray Cove. Observe and get hands-on with cownose and southern stingrays and brown-banded and white-spotted bamboo sharks swimming through a shallow saltwater pool. Stingray Cove is an experience visitors of all ages will love, so make sure you don't miss out. And while you're at the zoo, be sure to visit all your favorite animal friends and make some new ones. Plan your visit at scz.org today.
Very good. Thank you, Akeem, for showing that. I appreciate it. Stingray Cove is going to have a grand opening on April 14th, coming, all right, April 15th, I'm sorry. And it is a fantastic experience. I don't know how many of you have ever petted a stingray, but you can reach your arms into the water. You'll have to wash your hands a little bit first before you go into the cove. Then you can pet the stingrays. You can actually feed the stingrays. You have to buy a little container of food, but you're able to feed them. They'll take the food right out of your hands. There are two sharks in there. The sharks do not have teeth like a regular shark does. They've kind of got gums, but they probably won't come up. They're not as interested in having people pet them. But the stingrays are actually interested in having people pet them. There are several very large stingrays. It'll be interesting to come past, and then about 40 of the smaller stingrays. So it is another thing that the Zoo Board and the Zoo Director has come up with as an opportunity to expand our horizons there at the zoo. And if you take a look at the future, later on this summer, we're going to have another huge opening where we are putting in two trains that are built right here in Sedgwick County by Chance Manufacturing. The trains, as everything that we're doing at the zoo, are environmentally friendly. They are electric trains, and they're recharged by solar power. So please come out and see all of the new exciting things that are happening in the zoo, and you're going to see more and more of this as we move forward because the Zoo Board has put together a 25-year master plan, and this is kind of the tip of the iceberg. So thank you very much, Akeem, for showing that today. I appreciate it. And come out and enjoy the fun. There is a lot going on at Sedgwick County Zoo. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. At this time, Commissioners, I'd like to welcome Elections Commissioner Angela Caddillo, who is back to provide you an update on Easy Vote.
Morning, Angela.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Angela Caddillo, you're Sedgwick County Election Commissioner. Here this morning with an update about the Easy Vote Solutions data security incident that I spoke to you about on March 23rd. To refresh your memory, Easy Vote is a project management software which we utilize to onboard and train higher election workers, as well as to plan and send out election supplies. This does not in any way connect to voting systems, equipment, or to our voter registration database. Late last week, Easy Vote Solutions notified me that their investigation into the data security event had concluded. The investigation determined that an unauthorized individual accessed certain files in their online storage system. They were not able to determine definitively whether other files were accessed, so they reviewed all files in that location to determine who might be at risk. As you know, there were files in that online storage location which contained some of our election workers' personal information. I spoke with Easy Vote CEO, and he informed me that they are now in the process of sending out official notification letters directly to those affected. The letter describes the event that occurred, provides a phone number in which our election workers can call for information, and gives instructions on how to access a credit monitoring and identity theft protection package that Easy Vote is providing. This letter is going out to those who have their full social security number or driver's license information exposed. We are talking with Easy Vote about those with only a partial social security number exposure, and I am advocating for those individuals to be included in the protection Easy Vote is providing. They've reached out to their insurance company to discuss that request, and if that coverage is extended, those individuals will receive a letter directly from Easy Vote. Election office staff has been contacting election workers via phone to provide information, but anyone who has questions should contact my office at 316-660-7100, or email voterinformation@sedgwick.gov. And then finally, I have been assured that all of our files have been moved to a secure location, and now my office is in the process of having those removed permanently.
Very good, Angela. Thank you very much for keeping us up to date on what's going on. I know the public, especially those who were affected, are very interested in this, so thanks for keeping on top of it. Appreciate it. And Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just want to say thank you for the update. And you did mention ID theft. ID theft protection is also part of this package?
Correct. I verified with the CEO yesterday that it is a comprehensive package. It includes both credit monitoring and identity theft protection.
Okay. And do you know how long the contract, how long that protection will last for these folks? Is it three years, or do we know?
They indicated one year.
One year. Okay. Well, thanks for that information. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any other questions. Thanks again for the update. We appreciate it.
Okay. Commissioners, taking a look at today's agenda, there is a proclamation declaring April Child Abuse Prevention Month, a proclamation declaring National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. There's a resolution appointed Jana Hayes to the Sedgwick County Animal Care Advisory Board, recommended by Commissioner Sarah Lopez. Under New Business, you will receive an update on the Sedgwick County Extension Center regarding 4-H outreach programs, reset the public hearings for the adoption of the Sedgwick County wastewater, and the Sedgwick County sanitary codes. You will hear from Annette Graham, Director of Aging, on the 2022 Aging Mill Liberty Contracts for Senior Center Programs Services, a report of the Boards and Bids and Contracts Regular Meeting from March 31st, and there is a 45-minute executive session scheduled as well. With that, Chairman Dennis, I'll turn the meeting over to you, sir.
Thanks, Akeem. I appreciate it. And thank you, everyone. We have a full house today, which is very nice to see everyone here in person. And it's even nicer because we're moving past COVID at this point in time, and you might notice that we don't have plexiglass between all the Commissioners anymore. So it's kind of nice to start getting back to normal again. I also want to thank all the health professionals. We had a briefing at the beginning about the health professionals, and that's been one of the top issues that we've had for the past two years. So thanks, everyone, and thanks for those that are joining us online and on KPTS. At this time, I'd like to call a meeting in order for April 6, 2022. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Invitation to be led by Reverend Jill Sander Toley, College Hill United Methodist Church. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
I want to invite you to begin just by taking a deep breath, and then receive this blessing in the words of Miriam Therese Winter. "May the blessings of God, the fountain of living water, flow within you as a river of life. May you drink deep her wisdom. May you never thirst again. May you go through life refreshing many as a sign of healing for all. In the name of the one who is life eternal. Amen."
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Sander, for being here. We appreciate it very much. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner Meitzner.
Present.
Commissioner Cruz.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Lopez.
Present.
Chairman Dennis.
Present. Next item, please.
Public agenda.
Commissioners, we did receive one item online last night. All Commissioners had an opportunity to review that, make a motion to receive and file. We have a motion in a second-day discussion. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner.
I'm sorry. Commissioner Howell.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Chairman, for the chance to speak. The one comment we did receive online is a, we have had this comment before. Same person wrote to us on this comment as regarding a noise issue in her neighborhood revolving around the club rodeo business there. I just want to remind everybody, we addressed this numerous times in previous meetings. In fact, I looked at this scientifically, and we spent a lot of time analyzing the noise situation in the neighborhood. So again, I received her comments. I appreciate her comments, but I have addressed this scientifically and objectively, and I think we've already talked about it. So with that, I want to just make that comment. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. I appreciate the comment. I know you have gone out even with meters to measure the decibels, so thanks for doing that. Any other comments? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner Meitzner. Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. And I don't believe we have anyone signed up to speak in present. Is that correct? Tanya? No. Okay. Very good. Next item, please.
Consideration of minutes. Item A, en banc meeting minutes of February 24, 2022.
Thank you. Commissioners, you've had an opportunity to review the en banc meeting minutes from February 24th, the regular meetings minutes on March 2nd, the regular minute meeting minutes on March 9th, and the regular meeting minutes on March 16th. Move to approve all four. We have a motion in a second-day discussion. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Next item, please.
Proclamations. Item A, proclamation declaring child abuse prevention month.
Thank you. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate the chance to read this proclamation this morning. It says, "Whereas we can build healthier, safer, and thriving communities if we take the same approach to raising families that we do to tending a community garden on a shared piece of land. And whereas children are locally grown and have the right to be safe and be provided an opportunity to thrive, burn, and grow. And whereas, hope and commitment are powerful fertilizers that strengthen and support Kansas families, thus preventing the far-reaching effects of maltreatment, providing the opportunity for children to develop healthy, trusting family bonds. And whereas, we must come together as partners to nurture, heal, and grow together because prevention happens in partnership. And whereas, by growing a better tomorrow for all children, together, we can ensure that Kansas children will grow to their full potential as the next generation of leaders, helping to secure the future of this state and nation. Now therefore be resolved that Chairman David Dennis and the Board of County Commissioners to hereby recognize April 2022 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Sedgwick County, and call this observance to the attention of all of our citizens. Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to adopt the proclamation."
Thank you. I'll second that motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, the proclamation should be received by Vicky Roper. I have a comment as well, but here's a proclamation we'd receive.
Yeah, thank you. I am Vicky Roper. I'm the Prevent Child Abuse Kansas Director at the Kansas Children's Service League. Thank you. And I'm also the Chair of the Wichita Coalition for Child Abuse Prevention, which is a 60-member coalition in this community that is trying to empower organizations in Wichita to come together to create an effective system to prevent child abuse and neglect. So we have quite a few folks here with us today, and I wanted to recognize them. This coalition started in 2008 as a response to a cluster of child abuse fatalities in Wichita, eight of those. And we have here Sarah Robinson, who is the co-chair with me of that as that coalition started, and Tom Stoltz, you're going to need to stand up too, because he started this whole coalition as well, and was on our leadership team and took a major role in his current job that he'd had then. So if you all will stand up, if you are part of WCAP or from a member agency, and be recognized. So, yay! And we also have Tom Beal here from the Kansas Department for Children and Families. He's the Regional Director in this region, so I also wanted to acknowledge that we had him here. We've worked in great partnership with all these 60 agencies to really build a community and to address some things. Mental health has been a huge issue for us with our large group as new resources are coming into the community, and our work groups have been around childcare, fatherhood, real support, which are diapers, wipes, and formula, and community awareness. So, thank you for signing the proclamation this morning. Although we know that child abuse prevention takes place year-round, April is an opportunity to sort of spotlight the work that's happening. And just as the proclamation said, this really happens in community. It happens together. We all learned a long time ago that this was a complex problem and wasn't going to be easily fixed without partnership and without coming together. Our theme is Growing a Better Tomorrow for All Children Together, and we're using a community garden metaphor then to help children and families thrive. We recognize that children and families are our greatest natural resource. We want to come alongside them. We want to plant seeds of support. Resources has become a major thing for our coalition in getting resource information out. Everyone needs support sometimes. Adversity is not our destiny. Resilience can be built and can have a major impact. We have, I think, distributed to you packets with information about child abuse prevention and Child Abuse Prevention Month, a lapel pin which we hope you will wear during April, a pinwheel which is our national symbol for playfulness, joy, and great childhoods. We are planning lots of things this month. One is at the Sedgwick County Zoo for member agencies later this month, so thank you for that support. Pinwheel gardens are springing up all over the community, but all over the county and all over the state, and so you should see them everywhere as a symbol of this month. And then the Sedgwick County Child Abuse Center and the Kansas Children's Service League are trying to do a training a day, which I think may kill you guys, that they're going to do 40 over the course of this month, really. And on both websites, at the CAC, the Child Advocacy Center, and at Kansas Children's Service League, they list when those trainings are and when they're available. And you all are very aware, this is the third April that's been held during the pandemic, and we're starting to see what the new normal is going to start looking like, and we're seeing that it's very much hybrid. We've got events still virtual and events still face-to-face, just opening back up. We are seeing that the risk for child abuse and neglect is very high. Families are under extreme stress. A lot of families are in transition. They were unemployed for a while. They lost family income. Maybe, you know, they're in new positions now. They've gone through times where childcare has been really difficult to find, where they've been doing remote learning at home and in and out and back and forth, and trying to navigate all that. We've seen a lot of school and business closings, food insecurity. We hope that you all will support family-friendly workplace policies. The heavy lift on that right now is childcare. We're starting to work with some city and county folks around some childcare regulations and changing some things to make things better for our families, to expand childcare access. And we hope that you join us on social media with hashtag #GrowingBetterTogether. So, thank you.
Well, thank you. We have several comments. Commissioner Howell.
Well, thank you again, Chairman, for the chance to speak. And I want to say thank you, Vicky Roper, for being here, representing KCSL, Kansas Children's Service League. They are the community's leader on this topic of preventing child abuse. I want to say thank you. You guys are making a difference. And I, as one of the Commissioners here, I've been focused on, one of the things I've been focused on, both at state and local level, is our juvenile justice system and corrections. And I think, you know, the reality is, the best opportunity, really, to change the course of someone who ends up in a situation where they end up in corrections and in courts and all that, the best opportunity really is in the home at the earliest ages. And so, you know, having families that truly care for their kids and have the resources they need and the training that they need to know how to do that is really a key piece on, again, I like your analogy of growing the next generation. It's a nice, it's a nice way to think about that. And you have nice graphics and appreciate the pinwheels as a reminder. I just want to say, I know you guys are making a difference. I want to say thank you for all you do, and I firmly believe that the way to change our future is to focus on the children in the home. And I think that's a major part of this entire topic. So thank you for making that important today.
We're at a time in the history of this field where it's all about prevention. So we're all moving upstream together to keep families together, to keep families in their home, to help them be successful, to help increase their opportunities, to create economic mobility, to, you know, do this work together. And that's everyone. I mean, that's with the Department for Children and Families, with the Child Advocacy Center. All of us are trying to move together to support that. It's a national movement that we're seeing to help families thrive. So, thank you for calling that out.
Thank you. Commissioner Meitzner?
Thank you. Vicky, thank you for being here, and congratulations. We have, see you every year supposedly, but we had a COVID year or two that were kind of troubling. But this, what you explained, I don't need to repeat it, but you helped connect the dots. You know, we've all been, this mental health issue countywide or locally has been, has been a big deal. And this, to know that you all are focusing at such a young age, it just really, it's an impact for me in a positive way, knowing that a large group like this is working so hard at the, maybe the first, the first stage of what potentially could be mental and physical health abuse and homeless, all those things. So you did a nice job of saying that. I appreciate it. I love the "Growing a Better Tomorrow." That's a great deal, and thank you for the packet. It's great information. I'll say sometimes... I'll say sometimes government meetings can be a little boring, so I'll have my coloring book handy during some of those. I'll keep this handy, so I'll always think of you during some of the most intriguing parts of county commission meetings. So thank you, Vicky. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you. So I see on your April 22 calendar here, on today's 30 Ways of Growing Better Together, we all have to learn a magic trick. Have you learned yours yet?
No, I don't have the magic trick. Do any of you guys have the magic trick ready to go? No, but we'll work on that.
Well, I love this calendar. I think this is a great way to be active and engaging and really just spread awareness via social media or wherever. I am looking, is Kayla in the audience? Oh, hey. So we're meeting today. I'm excited about that. Thank you for reaching out. And then I was looking through the 159-page document that the State of Kansas solicited for funds to the Spark Committee for the ARPA money that was available for the State of Kansas. And interestingly enough, I saw that the Department of Children and Families is asking for $10 million for an electronic medical records system so that we can keep track of kids in foster care, because currently, they are keeping track of kids in foster care in a three-ring binder in 2022. And so I think that that's another challenge of really funding social service agencies to the level that we're able to care for folks in the age of the technology that we live, so that kids don't fall through the cracks, because that's what's happening. And sadly, too many are falling through the cracks. So I appreciate all that you do. It's a really good testament to your organization to have so many people show up in support of this today. I'm sorry I didn't wear blue. I remember last year, but I didn't this year, so my bad. But thank you for being here, and I appreciate all you guys do, and I look forward to meeting with you, Kayla.
Again, thank you very much for being here. We appreciate it very much. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item F, Proclamation declaring National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week.
Thank you. Commissioners, I'd like to read a proclamation. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time, that requires police, fire, or other emergency medical services. And whereas, when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas, the safety of our police officers, firefighters, and medics is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who call 911. And whereas, the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services are public safety telecommunicators. And whereas, public safety telecommunicators who monitor activities by radio and provide emergency to ensure safety are the single vital link for our police officers, firefighters, and paramedics. And whereas, Sedgwick County Emergency Communications Public Safety Communicators have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. And whereas, each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Chairman David T. Dennis, and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners do hereby proclaim April 10th to the 16th, 2022, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and citizens safe. Commissioners, you've heard the proclamation. I move that we approve. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. And this is being accepted by Alana Moreno, Deputy Director of Emergency Communications. Welcome.
Thank you, Elena Moreno, your Deputy Director of Emergency Communications, better known as 911. Just want to say thank you all for the recognition that you're giving us for this week. We definitely, thank you, love celebrating our team this week, but really, all year long, I think, coming off of the heels of a really big incident that made the news, we had that active shooter that came out at Town East and just, our center got inundated with a number of calls, record number of calls, really, in a short amount of time. My team handled it, just like the professionals that they are, quickly, got help to where it needed to be, and, you know, everything obviously ended as well as it could in that situation. So just want to say thank you for recognizing us and take it back to my team.
Well, thank you very much, and please thank the entire staff over there. I know that it's kind of calm at times and kind of extreme pressure at other times, depending on what's happening in our community. And you are the vital link in order to make sure that we get the word out to the people that can respond to help our community. So thank you very much, and let your staff know how much we appreciate them.
Thank you, I will.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Appointments. Item G, Resolution Appointing Jana Hayes to the Sedgwick County Animal Care Advisory Board.
Commissioner Lopez. I'm sorry, Commissioner. Mr. Papoon, I apologize. I keep forgetting you.
It is Commissioner Lopez's appointment, so I can understand. Thank you, Chairman. Mike Papoon, County Counselor, this Item G is a resolution appointing Jana Hayes to the Sedgwick County Animal Care Advisory Board. This is a 10-member board that each Commissioner gets two appointments to, four-year terms. This board makes recommendations to our Sedgwick County Animal Control Department on budget, policy issues, and the like, and it's a valuable board for the county. Ask that you approve the resolution appointing Ms. Hayes.
Well, thank you, Mr. Papoon. Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you. Well, I really appreciate your commitment to wanting to be on this board, so I move that we adopt the resolution appointing Jana Hayes today.
I second it. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. And I don't know if, no audience, is she?
Walk up to the podium.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, there she is.
Good.
Please read the red again. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Sedgwick County Animal Care Advisory Board. So, oh my God.
I do. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hayes. Would you like to say anything?
I'm very excited to be here. I'm excited for this position. I have been an animal lover since the day I was born, so I'm very excited to see where this will bring, and hopefully I can be a voice to the animals that need it. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
New Business. Item H, Sedgwick County Extension Center update regarding 4H youth outreach programs.
Good morning, Dr. Brantley.
Good morning.
Do you want to introduce your staff to everyone?
Absolutely. Well, as you know, Commissioners, the Extension Center tries its hardest to bring research-based, unbiased information to the citizens of Sedgwick County, and this is done through our four departments, which include agriculture, horticulture, community vitality, family and consumer sciences, and 4H youth development. We appreciate your continued support of our programs and of our outreach, and we're here to talk today about our 4H youth development programming. And so I'd like to introduce our two 4H agents, Nicole Berry and Alexandria Ware. They'll talk a little bit more about themselves and about their programming in the last year.
Well, thank you. Welcome. Good morning.
Thank you. Good morning. Thank you for having us. So my name is Nicole Berry, and I'm a 4H agent, one of two 4H agents in Sedgwick County, overseeing community outreach programs. And a major focus of our program year this year has been to engage urban schools that don't typically receive extension programming and expose them to the programs that 4H has to offer. So, so far this year, we have served 3,554 students in free or low-cost traditional 4H programs, non-traditional 4H programs, excuse me. So these programs focus on building skills and life experiences through hands-on learning, and through these programs, students have an opportunity to engage in subjects that aren't necessarily taught in the K-12 traditional education system. Some of our programs offer wheat science, entomology, plant science, and soil sciences. And then our biggest success this year has been our implementation of a new program called Mindful Me, and it focuses on primary-age mindfulness and teaches basic social-emotional concepts to second-grade students. And it's a seven-week program that is delivered in person in classrooms in Sedgwick County. This year was our pilot year, and we were able to serve 129 students from diverse schools across the county. Through our pre- and post-test evaluations, we have noticed that our students are leaving the program with increased interpersonal skills and social-emotional understanding. Teachers are also reporting that they're seeing long-term behavior change after the program is completed, and kids are continuing having those conversations among themselves in the classroom and there is in the schools. So we find that so exciting because we know right now, as we talked about with Child Advocacy this month, that supporting our kids right now in their social-emotional health is so important. So that long-term behavior change is what we really want to see. We also collaborate with other community organizations. For example, we have partnered with Envision Pre-K this year, serving blind and visually impaired as well as typically sighted students, and helping them learn through hands-on environmental education because they're located centrally in a very urban location. So making sure that we have really well-rounded learning experiences for these kids in our county. We also support the youth development staff on McConnell Air Force Base. We support through training of positive youth development strategies and trauma-informed care. We were also able to partner with the state 4H program to put together a national grant for our kids right here in Sedgwick County, sending 35 military-connected youth to Rock Springs Ranch to participate in a camp experience with other military youth from around the state. And so as you can see, we are committed to meeting kids in our county where they are at and exposing them to new learning experiences that they might not come into contact with if they didn't have the exposure of 4H. So I'm going to hand off to my colleague Alexandria, as she oversees our community clubs.
Thank you, Nicole. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Alexandria Ware, and so I am your traditional club agent, so I'm over everything, community clubs, leadership, youth development, and our state events. So I also handle the urban outreach of making sure that we're bringing more minority youth into 4H. And so today, instead of listening to me talk, I bring one of our advisory council members who helps oversee our program, and his kids are also in 4H. So I'm going to turn it over to Chris Ballman, who's on our advisory council, to talk about the impact that 4H is having on him as an advisory council member and his kids.
Good morning, Chris.
Good morning. As Andrea said, my name is Chris Ballman, and I am the Vice President of the Sedgwick County Advisory Board. As a board member, we try to raise money to help cover some of the various 4H expenses as talked about before by Nicole and Alexandria, on the day camps, the overnight camps, senior scholarships, and travel expenses for our judging teams here in Sedgwick County. I was a 4Her personally here in Sedgwick County for 12 years growing up, and now I have my two oldest children are in 4H, my 11-year-old daughter, and she is our club secretary, and my nine-year-old son. 4H has impacted myself and my children by teaching us some of those everyday skills that you may need. Here are some examples. How to be an active member in a meeting, how to make a motion, second, discussion, you know, the whole Robert Rules of Orders? But also, how to read a recipe, how to measure out baking items for those chocolate chip cookies that are going to go to the county fair. Is that a tablespoon or a teaspoon? Or does it even really matter? Also, how to use a tape measure for their woodworking project. Dad, we need to cut that board at that, you know, that sixth mark after the big one? Oh, you mean three eights? Yeah, that mark. That's where we need to cut it. Lastly, it has taught us how to get up in front of a club and talk with confidence by doing a project talk or demonstration at the club level. Because as I tell my kids, you will always have to get up and talk in front of someone or some group. It doesn't matter what career you end up choosing. These are just a few little ways 4H has impacted us and taught us some of those real-life skills that are needed in today's environment, that I feel might be lacking in the classroom or out on the ball field. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Dr. Brantley, do you have anything else you want to add?
No, we just wanted to bring that back to you.
Well, thank you. I appreciate Nicole, Chris, and Andrea being here today. I was especially interested in your connection to McConnell Air Force Base. One thing that I learned in 29 years that I moved all over the world with my family is that it's difficult for children to move from one place to another because we rip them up from things that they know when we move them to another location that they don't know. And so you have to have something that you can connect them quickly to whatever new area that they move to. And so I use Boy Scouts for the way that I connected my children as they were growing up, but I think that your idea of having 4H, if you can spread that across the military a little bit, because it is critical that we are able to support those families as they move from one place to another. So thank you very much for what you do, and I had a granddaughter involved in 4H here, so it's something that I do know a little bit about. But I appreciate the update, and thanks for everything that you're doing for our students and for the region, especially involving agriculture. Thanks. I move that we receive and file. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Next item, please.
Item I, reset the public hearings for the adoption of the Sedgwick County Wastewater Code and the Sedgwick County Sanitary Code.
Well, good morning, Chris. Is this deja vu all over again?
It is. Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, as for the record, Chris Labrum, MABCD. So about six weeks ago, we brought an item to you to set the public hearing for both of these codes. That included a very specific publication timeline as per Kansas Department of Health and Environment Regulations. Unfortunately, there was an error in that publication, and that timeline was not met. So I wanted to clarify that I, we do not have any issue with the code, we do not have any issue, reason to think that or suspect there would be a problem with the public hearing or any comment there, but we want to ensure that we very exactly meet that state statute. So the item for you today is a request to reset that public hearing for the 18th of May and to reestablish the publication timeline so that we can publish on April 20th, April 27th, and May 4th prior to that hearing.
Thank you. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, I don't want to focus on the negative here, but I am curious, was the error, an internal error or an external error?
It was internal to Sedgwick County, yes, sir.
And I think it may matter to a future issue on today's agenda, so that's why I wanted to ask and clarify that.
Yes, yes.
I think this is really not a fact, I mean, this is really not a big issue, so to me, I'm glad it was found before we went to the next step without realizing there was a problem. So whoever found that, kudos to them, and I think it's not a major issue, so I would certainly support resetting the date of the public hearing. That's no problem for me. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I don't see any other comments, so I move that we reset the public hearing for May 18th, 2022, authorized publication of the notices of hearing in the official county newspaper for three consecutive weeks. We have a second and a motion. I see no other comments. Madam Clerk, call a roll, please.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Thank you, Chris. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item J, 152022 Aging Mill Levy Contracts for Senior Center Program Services.
Good morning, Annette.
Good morning, Commissioners, Annette Grant, Department on Aging. Today I bring before you 15 contracts for the 2022 Senior Center Services with senior centers. Each senior center's provide a variety of services, including education and social activities for older adults age 55 and older. Each senior center is required to provide certain types of programming, including baseline activities, special events, projects, and education. These funding recommendations were approved by the Sedgwick County Advisory Council on Aging and Physical Disabilities at the October 13, 2021, meeting. The contract period starts January 1, 2022, and ends December 31, 2022. The senior centers and their funding levels are: The City of Bel Air, the Bel Air Senior Club at $18,000; City of Bentley, Bentley Senior Club at $5,000; City of Cheney, Cheney Senior Club at $5,000; City of Clearwater, with the Clearwater Senior Center at $18,000; City of Derby, for the Derby Senior Center at $115,000; City of Hayesville, for the Hayesville Senior Center at $37,500; City of Mulvane, for the Mulvane Senior Center at $35,000; City of Park City, with the Park City Senior Center, $35,000; City of Sedgwick, for the Sedgwick Senior Club at $5,000; City of Valley- City of Sedgwick, for the Sedgwick Senior Club at five thousand; City of Valley Center, for the Valley Senior Center Club at eighteen thousand; Oaklawn Improvement District, for the Oaklawn Senior Center, thirty-five thousand; Senior Services Incorporated of Wichita, for the, for Downtown Senior Center at eighty thousand; Linwood Senior Center at fifty-seven thousand; Northeast Senior Center at fifty-seven thousand; Orchard Park Senior Center at fifty-seven thousand, for a total contract amount for those fifteen at fifty-seven, five hundred and seventy-seven thousand five hundred dollars. This budget authority was included in the twenty-twenty-two budget approved by the Board of County Commissioners in August of last year. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So just for clarity, is there anything different this year than what we've had maybe last year? Any funding has gone up or down, or anybody added or subtracted from those lists?
You do not see the Mount Hope Senior Club on here. They have had some issues in staffing and operations and have not been able to open up since COVID. We have been working with the city, and there will be a contract coming forth. So that one will be coming before you soon at the same amount of money. I believe the senior, there's a little bit of change for Hayesville that was approved in funding, and I think there was a couple others, I'm sorry, I don't have that information with me, that you had made some recommendations for increasing last year, Commissioner Howell. I think one of those, was that two of those were in your area?
Yeah, Mulvane and Oaklawn.
That both moved up a different, to a higher level of funding. So that would have been Oaklawn, they moved up to a higher level, yeah, those two moved up.
But this is the, this is the previous amount, not the current, I mean, this is what we had before the increase.
This is the current amount. This includes those increases.
This includes increase, okay.
Yes, this is based on the funding that was approved by the Board of County Commissioners. Yes.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I just have a comment, and I'll be ready to vote on this, but if you don't mind, I'd like to make a couple of quick comments on this entire topic, if you don't mind. I really don't want to, again, I don't want to be negative, I don't want to focus on, you know, we've had this public debate for years, and I don't want to belabor all the points. I would hand out some of these just for points of discussion here. You can hand a pair of those to each person. Thank you. So just make, let me just make a couple of points. Again, I was all surprised this was approved by the advisory council, really, six months ago. That was a long time ago, and here we are, six months later, having the discussion today. But no surprise in that six, you know, six months between those two points. But my personal, my personal thought is, back in nineteen eighty-two, when the ballot measure was passed, again, there was a ballot question, and it said, shall Sedgwick County levy up to one mil for service programs for the elderly? And that passed on a vote of about two to one ratio. And since then, we have, I should say, that was, nineteen eighty-two was the year that was passed. Nineteen eighty-four was the first year that we actually funded those programs from that ballot question. And one of these charts, again, I've got two charts in front of me, and I'll just show them, probably can't see them very well, but there's obviously a decline in that line there. What you're seeing there is from nineteen eighty-four till last year, a decline in a percentage of mill levy for our total Sedgwick County budget. It went from four point three eight seven percent of our budget down to one point four five percent of our budget. That was a little more than a year ago. I have not updated this chart, but so I just illustrate, I provided this as illustration to show that in terms of a commitment, in terms of our total funding, our commitment to these programs has gone down. And of course, the ballot question is, it says up to one mil, but we're providing about point four, point four one, point four two mils in that range is what we're providing these days. The other chart here I'd show you, the bottom line there is increase in age sixty-five. It used to be about ten percent of age sixty-five and above, back in nineteen eighty-two, when this ballot question was passed. It's about fifteen percent now. So we've had a fifty percent increase in population of age sixty-five and above. Population of Sedgwick County has also gone up, but that declining line there is people under age sixty-five. So what we see right now is an aging, an aging population. So putting these two things together, just put that together, we have roughly fifty percent greater need than we had back then. Obviously, the economy's changed quite a bit, and our commitment from our budget has actually gone down. And so, you know, I feel, I feel personally bothered the fact that there was a ballot question. If we don't want to, if we don't want to keep the spirit of that ballot question, I think the spirit was we would fund these programs. And I would like to see the aging advisory council using a greater degree to determine, should say, make recommendations for appropriations of those revenues. What are the needs in our community? We don't, it doesn't really work that way. They don't, they don't drive the topic. They do, I think, eventually agree to it, but their conversation is not, they're leading, essentially, trying to find those great needs in the community. That's not how it works. So I would like to see, if I could, I would like to empower them to have a greater role in making appropriation recommendations. I think that we have not really, even though it says up to one mil, I think the people spoke, they want these programs provided, and to the extent the aging population has gone up, and our commitment from the county budget has gone down, to me, together, it's about one-sixth of the commitment versus the population, taking those two things together that we had back in nineteen eighty-four. So, again, I'm bothered by that. I think that our needs are greater than we realize. You know, last year we had, you know, probably seven, eight percent inflation. I think it's going to be a much higher in twenty-twenty-two and probably going to continue. The needs are huge, and the elderly in our community have great needs. And so, you know, if the county's going to, if the county's going to follow the spirit of that ballot question nineteen eighty-two, I don't think this is how to do it. So with that, I do appreciate the fact that we have senior centers providing the services. That's primarily how we provide services to our seniors, is through the senior centers. Those that have greatest needs, I think they do connect with senior centers. I do want to show them support. So I'll vote, I'll vote for the resolution today, but I just, I'm still somewhat disappointed that I feel like we're just having the same political debate, and it just never seems to end. And I say this with respect to my colleagues, we just have to agree to disagree. Me personally, I would like to see us do a little bit more. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adopt the proclamation, or the resolution at the appropriate time. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Annette, for being here. My question really is for Tim and you. Yesterday, we received a spreadsheet of sorts about the proposed summary for the one-time funding utilization that we agreed to, and I just want to make sure, it looks like, Commissioners, we received this yesterday at four twenty-four in the afternoon, which is what I'm referencing. It talks about the hundred thousand dollars for senior centers to address infrastructure needs, thirty thousand for food boxes for older adults, forty thousand for, to assist with hearing aid costs, and ten thousand for glasses for low-income older adults. So how will folks be communicated to around how to apply for these needs? Will you be working with partner organizations to determine the greatest need of those who will be utilizing these services? What is the plan to communicate these needs, specifically first, the infrastructure needs?
So for the infrastructure needs, that will be, we will have, we will take, we would plan to take a tiered approach. So based on the level of the senior center and the type of funding and the size of the organization, we will set tiers of funding that they can apply for. And then when we would define the types of things they can apply for, most likely that would be equipment, computers, furniture, things like that, that they can get and do this year. So with a hundred thousand dollars in this many senior centers, you know, that will be, we'll have to monitor that and make that available. So that's why we were planning on taking a tiered approach, and we would work with the senior centers and get something out to them as soon as this is approved, so that they know how they can go about applying for those funds, specifically to that.
Okay, so if, you know, one has a greater need than the, than the other, you're just simply going on the, really the structure that's already kind of in place for how they receive funding in the first place? Is that, is that what I'm hearing?
That's, one of the things that we had talked about was looking at doing at a tiered level. Again, a hundred thousand dollars with that many senior centers, we kind of have to try to make it equitable and fair so that all of them have the opportunity to apply for funding, and then to set some criteria about how they would use that funding.
Sure, I guess the point that I'm trying to make is there are some senior centers that are better off than others, and, you know, with, particularly with Lot Familia, which we haven't even talked about, which we have been talking about for quite a while now. You know, the security at that location is pretty, the need is great. And so that's one example of, you know, the, the infrastructure that hasn't been, that hasn't existed really, over the past couple of years, to make sure that people are safe in that particular building. But I guess I'm just wondering, you know, is the tiered approach the best approach? And I'm not saying it isn't or it is, I'm just sort of asking the question because we're here now talking about senior centers. So I'd love to be a part of that conversation. I know that you guys do your due diligence when you make these types of decisions, so please understand that I do respect your decision-making. I just kind of want to be involved, I guess, a little bit in how this goes about so that it's equitable for each senior center in terms of how much money they do receive and how they, how it could best benefit each of these locations. So that's one. The food boxes, are you, how do you plan to determine the distribution of those?
We had had a program that we had funded with some Older Americans Act money last year that proved to be very successful, and we just took referrals from people, from our case managers and from others in the community who identified older adults that had that need, and we had worked with an organization, we had developed a food box, what was going to be in that for the, for the food for a certain period of time. We worked with them to order the food, to pack up the boxes, and then we had our RSVP volunteers who delivered those boxes. So we would do something very similar to that. So we already have a model that worked very successfully. And I did want to just reach back to the senior center infrastructure issue. So we also operate, as you know, as the Central Plains Area Agency on Aging, and through that, we have Older Americans ARPA dollars that come down through the state unit on Aging, that then are then defined by certain types of criteria for which we can use those funds. We're in the planning process for that, and part of what's happening with that was the state was going to provide match money that we needed to use by the end of this state fiscal year. We just found this out like about a month and a half ago. So as one of the processes of that, we had reached out to all the senior centers across the three county region we serve to find out what their needs were for things like infrastructure. So we already have gotten feedback from all of the senior centers. So this will supplement, but we think that we'll be able to use some of those ARPA dollars to help senior centers across our region to help with some of that bigger infrastructure process, too. So this will kind of be a supplement, so we can look at those needs. We have information from senior centers, so I think we're well into that process, and we will likely have two sources of funding that we can use, because what we do know is the significant disproportionate impact of COVID on older adults and the subsequent isolation and loneliness, and the impacts on their, both their physical and mental health have been tremendous. We know that, we've seen that, we hear that on a regular basis. So we know that if we can help senior centers improve their infrastructure, they can be that first line of defense at the neighborhood level, and we want them to be inviting and welcoming and have those resources they need so that people will come back, because we know that they have been slow to come out of that isolation after the, you know, as the pandemic is kind of getting in our rearview mirror. So we really wanted to take a high-level approach and a broad approach with all of our funding sources to help impact and reduce social isolation and loneliness, and really start people coming back out into these centers.
So with the, the hearing aids, are you working with a certain manufacturer? Are you working with a certain, like, a hearing aid company here in town?
We haven't got that far yet. We were waiting for the approval from the county commission. So we are really looking at where, where we can find the lowest-cost hearing aids, because as you know, they're very, very expensive. Twenty-five hundred, five thousand, six thousand, they're very expensive, and Medicare does not cover that, nor does Medicaid. So we will be looking to see across our community where is a low cost, the lowest-cost opportunity.
Great, and then one final question. So the allocation that we, the one-time funding contingency fund that we approved was for five hundred thousand dollars, and it looks like the total request here, if approved, is a hundred and eighty. So have we determined any sort of transportation needs? I mean, it looks like there's about three hundred and twenty thousand dollars left. I'm not advocating that we spend it all, but I know that transportation is a huge need in all facets, no matter your age, here in our community. And so have, have we, have we discussed that?
Transportation did come up, and I will tell you right now, transportation is a challenge to provide. All systems are struggling to find drivers. They are having the same issue with the staffing shortages. Our internal programs, we have had so much turnover, we've continually had two or three positions open. And we know that our partners and that those entities that we contract with are also having challenges. So we were really hesitant to put any additional funding in there or recommend that because of the challenges current providers are already having, meeting the needs they have. And because this was, you know, short-term money, it was only through the end of the year, that's why that wasn't moved forward.
Okay, well, it, it just makes me concerned a little bit, because if we're going to invest in infrastructure that will make a place better to enjoy, but we can't get people to the place, where, how do we figure out how to address that challenge? I've heard it all over the place. So I understand staffing is a, is a real challenge in all facets, but I'd hate to see buildings get refurbished, but the, the challenge of getting people there still lingers. And so how do we, how do we ensure that people can attend a nice newly refreshed building of sorts? So thank you for your, your comments today. I appreciate it, and I look forward to working with you on this.
Thank you. Well, Annette, I appreciate you being here today. I agree with Commissioner Howell that we need to make sure that we're funding the seniors' programs sufficiently, because the number of seniors are growing every single day. The comments from Commissioner Cruz, we'll discuss that email here in the future, that's not what the agenda item is today, but that's something that we need to talk about further as, as we move into that for the future. The agenda item that we've got today, though, does concern me. If we take a look at what's on this agenda item, and remember, you provided, I think, fifteen different services, as I recall, totally. And over those fifteen different services, back a number of years ago, when prioritized those, senior centers was the number fifteenth out of fifteen. But it still receives the bulk of the funding. And why does that concern me? Well, because I represent one-fifth of the county as far as population, but let me break it down a little bit on what I represent. If we take a look at all five districts and we look at the population, all of us are a little over a hundred, between a hundred and four and a hundred and five thousand people. But let's break it down a little bit more and take a look at those five districts, because we're talking about seniors now. Well, out of the five districts, Commissioner Meitzner has sixteen percent, I have sixteen percent of the seniors, Commissioner Howell thirteen percent, Commissioner Cruz thirteen percent, and Commissioner Lopez fourteen percent. So then most of the seniors are in Commissioner Meitzner's and my district. So I would hope we'd be providing services to the districts that do have more seniors. That's important to me. Now, when we look at how much funding that these five districts provide back to the community that can support your organization, if we look at the total square miles, and obviously I've got the most square miles, but let's take a breakdown of the value per square mile, because we have to look at whether or not that the people that are living in those districts are as affluent as those that are living in other districts and can find ways that they can get services in other aspects. So if we break it down by square mile, my district is worth a little over two million dollars per square mile. Now let's put that in context. The next closest is Commissioner Lopez's, which is four and a half million dollars, over twice as much per square mile. Let's put it in a little more context. Commissioner Cruz's district is worth six million three hundred thousand dollars per square mile. Moving on to Commissioner Howell's, is worth seven million eight hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars per square mile, and Commissioner... And Commissioner, Commissioner Meitzner's district is worth about $11,700,000 per square mile. So it looks to me like when we're looking at, at the seniors and then we look at the population density, my population density obviously is the smallest. I only have 229 people per square mile. So how do you provide the services to those, those individuals? You break it down. Well, what your proposal is today is we're going to spend $577,500. But of that, your proposal today is to spend a total of 67,000 of that in my district. 67,000 out of 557,500. Even if we did it equitably, and I'm not saying we divide everything equally because every single district is a little bit different. But if we did divide it equally, we'd get $115,500 per district. And so I'm a little over half of the way there. Oh, by the way, just one of the, of the senior centers that you are providing for us today is going to get 115,000. That's just one senior center. So we need a new way of doing this. We need to support the seniors. There's 15 different projects that you do work on every single day. And yet, everything that you bring to us is how that we're going to give more money to certain senior centers and we're going to forget District III completely. You pretty well wiped me out. So I, I want to support the senior services. I want to support what's happening in those senior services. So what I task you to do is go back and find a way that we can support our seniors and quit worrying about senior centers. Commissioner Howell has a rebuttal, obviously.
Mr. Chairman, I was, I was, I was really not wanting to debate this. You obviously came prepared with data, so I think you anticipated this debate. Couple of items. Number one, the 15 items that were provided that you referenced earlier, that was a staff report that was created overnight. It wasn't done scientifically, it wasn't done by the Asian Advisory Council, it wasn't done by commissioners or management staff. It was done, I think, I think I know who did it, but that, that, it was a request of a commissioner and it was presented overnight. And if you were to ask seniors their thoughts on what's the most important thing out of those 15 provide, things we provide, I think senior centers would be pretty high on that list. But we didn't ask them. Most of the services provided, those other 14, are grant funds. So the idea that their property tax-funded services is not, is not really a fair comparison, in my opinion. There's all kinds of ways to compare districts. Your district is vastly different than mine, Commissioner Dennis. I would say you have four and a half times more landmass than I have. I have four and a half times more population density than you have. My homes, the homes in District Five are characterized by being very small and less, less expensive. Assessed value in my district is fairly small compared to districts One and Three especially.
Excuse me, are, are you assessing that?
I'm not done yet, thank you. The, the numbers that were put on this sheet originally were formulaic-based. It was based on the number of people who responded to these senior centers and get, to get services from the senior centers. It was formulaic-based. And any district, any senior center could have received any amount of money based on performance measures of who actually received those services at those locations and had the greatest, you know, if, if the needs were there, people responded and, and attended those senior centers, they would receive services and the, the numbers would, would follow. Because it was formulaic-based. We abandoned that formula a few years ago. I think it was very political, but we abandoned that formula. Much debate, much like we're having today, I made arguments that I think that the ballot question should matter. And that's really my focus for my discussion today, is I think the ballot question should matter. I think that most of our services are provided through senior centers. That's where we get services to people. You know, they do things like check on, do, they do well checks on people. They, they, they do home safety devices, wheelchair ramps and grab bars in the shower. They do, they do transportation. They take folks to grocery stores and back, back and forth. They are providing services that are needed by that senior population. And the fact that this, this was formulaic-based years ago is what drove those numbers. Now, with respect to Derby, receiving the, the greatest number, they were qualified under that formula. But two-thirds of the money that they receive from government comes from the city of Derby. And they still charge fees for services as well. But this is the, this is one of the largest senior centers in the entire country. And everybody from Sedgwick County that goes to senior centers, they're aware of Derby and many of them travel long distances, maybe even driving past other senior centers to get to Derby because they really like it there. So Derby is very special and unique. And the fact is, they, they've attained that highest level. They actually have received certifications. And I think, I think no other sort of, no other senior center anywhere near here has But to, if you want to look at the great needs for seniors, the needs are growing and senior centers are one way that we provide the services out to people. And the fact that this is formulaic-based, to me, is a, is a tremendous argument for how this was done. And we're sustaining essentially, though, decreasing funding over time by small amounts. Even though the economy hasn't, has great inflation, in a sense, their needs are growing through, the population is growing and, and the economy is growing, and yet their need, their needs are not being met because our, our funds are dwindling. So all I'm going to say is, I didn't want to have a big fight today. Me personally, the ballot question matters. And if we know there's great needs out there, let's do more, not less. And that's been my, that's been my argument along. Thank you, Chairman.
Well, thank you. And I stated when I began my statement is I agree with you that we need to provide funding for the seniors. My problem is how that we're providing the funding for the seniors. So I think we need a workshop on this item here in the near future so that we can move forward and find out what really is the right way of funding them. Commissioner Howell mentioned the formula a number of times. Well, the formula is, is only valid if you've put the right numbers into a formula. And does it meet the needs? And that's my concern. When my district per square mile is about one-third the assessed value, I, I don't understand why that you can come up and say that you've got a poorer district than mine. So that's where I'm coming from. Commissioner Cruz?
Chairman, if you wouldn't mind, could you just state the square miles of each district?
Sure. Yeah. Square miles per district, District One is 118.6. District Two is 176.4. District Three is 454. District Five is 153.7. And District Five is 106.1.
Okay. District Four was what?
District Four is 153.7.
Okay. So to, to the point that you're making around the price per square mile, your district is huge.
It is.
So when you divide that, it, it obviously is going to, we can debate this later. I, I appreciate the comments. I think that the way we are comparing things probably needs to be discussed in an equitable fashion. And maybe that's something that this, the Senior Advisory Board could take up. I think you make some good points. I think you both make some good points. I wonder how we could be productive in the way that we are addressing this so that we take the arguments out of it and really focus on seniors as a whole. Because to your point, Annette, seniors, social isolation is the number one killer of them. From my years of working in senior, senior living, that was a big deal. And, you know, I wonder if we could get back to that around really making sure their needs are being met in, in whatever way we can with the dollars that we have. So I appreciate the conversation. I think that you made a motion.
I have not yet. I'd be glad to, though.
Okay.
Yeah. Commissioner Howell?
Just a final comment. So I, I have had that assessed value data numerous times. I'll get it again. I'm sure it's probably changed since last time, but the five districts are drastically different on assessed value. Again, let's use the word wealth. People have a lot of money in certain districts and less money in other districts. That's just the way it works. And, and so again, I would argue that the, the dependency on government and the, and the needs for government services is different in the five districts. So I'll get that data once again. With respect to having another workshop, how many times have we done this now? Manager Stoltz?
Usually during the budget season, sir. And I think that the budget season is going to present us with competing interests. Businesses, unfortunately for the county, good everywhere. Public safety, mental health, seniors, and aging. So I, we have the discussion every year. I think it's important to, that maybe this is worthy of a workshop by itself because it is, there's a lot of moving pieces to this. Annette has a relationship with other counties on how we provide aging services, which, which she didn't even get into today. It's complicated to some degree. So I think to give her a chance in a workshop and to give the commission a chance to be heard on thematically how we offer these services and to meet her mission, which is to provide services for seniors to allow them, part of it is to allow them to stay in their own homes as long as possible, is probably a worthy topic to have a discussion on and really bear down just singularly on this topic so the commission could ask questions.
Let me just reflect on one, one point of history here. I, I have said before, I regretted a couple of votes in my time as elected official. I think it was in 2015 that Commissioner Norton made a motion to increase some funding to some senior centers. It was out, it was off-budget, out of cycle. In fact, it may have been this very same issue back in the day that he made a motion to make some changes to increase funding. And because it wasn't during budget cycle, and I was coming into this without having the background, I voted in line with the commissioner from District Four and commissioner from District Three at that time. The other two commissioners voted in favor of that. And I vote, I guess I was a swing vote, because I was brand new at that time. And I look backwards and I regret that vote because Commissioner Norton was very aware of this issue. And this has been, this has been hyper-political, in my opinion. All the issues we talked about, this, this one is extremely political. And when I mean say political, I mean is highly, is hotly debated. And every year since 2015, I have spent a lot of time studying this issue and looking at data. And I'm convinced, based on the ballot question, we have some work to do. There's great needs and we're not meeting those needs. We have a mandate from the people. I would have, actually, I said this before, Commissioner, or Manager Stoltz, if we really want to get rid of the mandate, let's put it back on the ballot. And I mean that. Mr. Papoun, I mean, let's put this back on the ballot. I would actually almost make a motion to put the ballot question back on the ballot. And let's validate the, the will of the people. Bear in mind, back in 1982, it passed two to one. We have 5% more elderly today than we had back then. I think people understand the need for taking care of our seniors. And the fact of the matter is, when we had this analyzed by our legal department, they said, well, it says up to one mil, therefore zero is a number. You can do zero up to one, you can't do more than one. The interpretation of that is, we were limited by the ballot question. That's the current day interpretation. But the spirit of, the spirit of the ballot question back in 1982 was that this was, this was going to provide funding for senior programs, which is why the senior, seniors in this community had parades downtown and rallied towards its passage. And the, the smaller government folks went tooth and nail to defeat its passage. So knowing that history, and by the way, I've got 20 articles in my office, I'd be glad to share with anybody who wants to see it. I spent a day at the library researching microfiche articles to get these documents together and looked at all the information regarding this ballot question. And the spirit in the day was, let's pass the ballot question for our seniors because it helps them. But our current day interpretation is zero is a number. So our, our range is zero to one. All the ballot question did was limit our spending to one mil, which we never even had, we've never gotten quite there yet. Back in 1984, we were close, but we've gone down every, every year since then. And it continues to go down, as well as our senior population going up. So looking at the history of this, I honestly think we need to put this back on the ballot and get the people to vote either rescind that mandate or to sustain that mandate so we have some clarity. Because this is hyper-political and it's ridiculous, in my opinion. And we continue to fight about this year after year. I don't know that workshop's going to get us anywhere, Mr. Manager. I, I think that this is just a, another iteration of the debate that's going to continue forever. I'm, I'm tired of workshops on this topic. It's time, time to go back to the people and let them ask, let them, let them tell us what to do. And I don't mean a referendum, I don't mean a, a opinion question, I mean, let's, let that be a binding question to determine what we should do, we should do with their money. That's what, that's my opinion is the only way out of this deal. So, Mr. Chairman, I would make a, a motion that we would approve the contracts and authorize the following actions, authorize the chairman to sign all necessary documents.
I'll second that.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. And I want to make sure that you understand that I am not being political on this. What I am trying to do is be fair. I'm fighting for my senior citizens when I have more senior citizens than most of the other districts have. And my rural areas are receiving $10,000 out of this 557,000. My, that's what you're giving my rural areas. So that's what I'm fighting for, is to make sure that we are providing the services to all of our seniors. So Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you. It's clear that I'm not of the senior citizen category. I will be 40 at the end of this month. I was born in 1982, so that was 40 years ago that this was on the ballot. So I wonder if instead of us talking about it up here, I mean, I, I am not a senior. So I'd like to hear from seniors. My first step into this room was in 2018, and it, it was a budget hearing. And it was packed. I mean, it was wall-to-wall packed with seniors who were advocating for the change at the time when we were talking about the different funding levels. So I wonder if we could reimagine a workshop or work with our senior centers that are currently operating to do a focus group at their locations, do some sort of outreach there to see how we could reimagine these facilities or the programming, just have a, a conversation and see, you know, how they're being utilized, see what could be improved, and really talk to seniors. And I, I do agree, we need to put it back to people. I don't know about a ballot measure, maybe we need to do that, maybe we don't. But I think the first step would be to talk to the actual folks that are utilizing these programs and see what their thoughts are. That's, that's what I'd like to do.
And Commissioner Cruz, on that point, I did want to bring up to you, to all of your attention that there's a couple of developments that have been happening this year. And one of those is why you saw a delay in the contract coming forward for the, for the senior centers. One was, we were able to fund internally a management information system for senior centers, those that, that meet at least on a regular weekly, you know, every week, every day of the week basis. And so that is just now being implemented. It is a management information system that makes it easy for their participants when they come in to sign in, to register for classes, and gives us real-time data and data by zip code on who is going to senior centers. Because we know that they are crossing districts. They don't just go in their district. They will go to other places. So that, we will have some information starting next year that will be very helpful as we can really look and see what's going on, what kind of programming are they using, who's attending, demographic, and all of that. Second issue is, we have been able to have a part-time staff that we've contracted with WSU who's doing research on senior centers, best practices, looking across the nation, looking to see what's going on, going out and meeting with our senior centers, and we're getting ready to do another survey. It's been, it was probably four or five years ago, the last time. We do on a regular basis try to survey participants and members of senior centers to see what are they using, what are their wants, what are their issues, what are their health status. So we gather that information and we're getting ready to do that again. So we're just in that process now and looking at research tools and different surveys so that we can go out and gather that information. We also, of course, do, every four years have to do a needs assessment of seniors aged 55 and older to see what are your needs now and what do you anticipate? We have to do that as an area agency on aging. And then we look at call center data. What are the calls coming in and what are people saying they need? So we're assessing the needs as we continue operations on a regular basis to really monitor and see what are the changes? What are the biggest needs? How are people utilizing services? Because these change over time, just as the population changes. So those are some things. And then I just wanted to comment, yes, that prioritization of services happened several years ago and it was a on-the-spot kind of response that was required for that. And what that looked at was simply the services we contract out. That's what it looked at. It didn't look at the internal services. It didn't look at the internal services. So when we look at, we do a mix. We do contract out with some of the, with the majority of the mil levy funds, but we also do some of the stuff internally. We have staff that do internal services that we are better suited to do or that there wasn't an entity in the community to do that. So when we look at the, the majority of the money, it doesn't really go to senior centers, it goes to those other types of services, and that's to any senior who needs it. Those are our services that are available, and so are the contracted services. Seniors connect with the providers and connect with those service entities to get the services they need. So just some, some additional information for you to, to consider.
Thank you. Commissioner Cruz?
One final comment, I'll be fast. I would like to see, like, how urban versus rural, how they utilize services like this to see, you know, if folks do live in the rural area, are they, are they utilizing more of their church services? Are they, are they active? Like, how, how are people utilizing services dependent upon where they live? I think that that would be important, just because our districts are so vastly different, to see the difference in lifestyle, where people choose to live and spend their time and how it impacts these services. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. We got it lit up again. Commissioner Howe?
Thank you, Chairman. Try not to talk very long here, but I just say that, you know, we don't, rarely when we talk about human services, we have, you know, major parts of our budget. We spend a huge amount of money on public safety, infrastructure, quality of life. You know, the Sedgwick County Zoo and Central County Park, for example, Lake Gafton, those are not my district. I don't have any of the, any of the quality of life issues actually in District Five. We have the least number of roads and bridges out of, out of the five districts. Things like mental health services, things like that, I don't know where they're consumed, I'd have never, I've never thought about that. Where are these services being rendered on behalf of Sedgwick County Government? Where, who are the, where do the people live that receive those services? I don't think that way. I don't know why we think that way in this issue. The fact of the matter is, we provide services regardless of people, regardless of where, what district they live in, where are the needs? That ought to be our, our strategy on how we spend these funds. And the money needs to go towards those folks that have needs. I don't want to harm the existing senior centers. I think they do provide great services. If you defund them at this point, there's going to be a lot of people who are going to be hurting as a consequence. So I'm very concerned about reductions in funding to the existing 15 senior centers we're talking about today. I'll just wrap this up and say this, to my point about a ballot question, I'm serious about that. And Mr. Manager and Mr. Papoun, I would like to work on a resolution to bring before the commission here for us to vote on to revisit the ballot, 1982 ballot question, to have that on the November ballot this year. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you. I just have a question. When was the funding formula, formula created for the senior services? What year was that?
So that was back in 2004 and '05. It was developed and implemented over a two-year time period. Prior to that, there was no formal process for how senior centers increased their funding. So they would come at budget time, and so it was, this was really a couple of years' work to really look at different ways and models for funding senior centers.
Have we kept that formula pretty much the same since, or have we updated that?
A few years ago, we moved away from that and really began to focus more on funding services at senior centers. So they were kind of kept at the level they were at, and then additional funding requests would be based on programming request.
Okay. Well, I, I mean, I'm clearly hearing all of this that's going on up here, and I would just maybe think that, looking into this a little bit further and having a longer conversation, because COVID in and of itself has changed so much on how we just live our daily lives, and the technology advances that have happened over the last handful of years are pretty significant as well. So potentially looking at creating maybe a new funding that everybody could be more comfortable with going forward might be worth looking into, just because this is such an important conversation that we're having. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I don't see any other comments at this time. I obviously have some very serious concerns about where we're at, especially when my rural area is getting $10,000 out of $557,000. And I've got 16% seniors, so I can't support the motion at this point in time. I can support a survey. If we're going to do a survey, make sure that we survey the seniors and not just the seniors at the senior centers, because if you survey the senior centers, you're going to get one set of data that says, hey, the senior centers are great. We need to survey the seniors in Sedgwick County. So I just wanted to let you know, I will not be voting in favor of this at this point in time, because I don't think that it is fair to all the districts. Thank you. Madam Clerk, we have a motion and a second call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
No. Thank you all. Next item, please.
Item K, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts, Regular Meeting on March 31st, 2022.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director. The regular meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts on March 31st results in five items that we bring before you this morning. The first one is election hardware-software upgrade for the election office. This recommendation is to accept the quote from Election Systems and Software LLC in the amount of $134,725. Our second item is the hot-mix asphalt for Public Works, and this recommendation is to accept the overall low bid from APAC Kansas Incorporated Shears Division and establish contract pricing that will be based on the asphalt material index for one year with two one-year options to renew. Item number three is three-quarter-inch SB2 aggregate for Public Works, and the recommendation is to accept the overall low bid from Cornejo Materials Incorporated, and that's for an initial purchase of $23,350, and then it will establish contract pricing for one year with two one-year options to renew. Item number four, publication of legal notices for various departments, and this recommendation is to accept the proposal from Strunk Publishing, doing business as the Ark Valley News. It's at the rates listed, and it'll be for a period of three years with two one-year options to renew. Our final item, item five, is adult detention facility lock replacement and camera video upgrades, or updates, excuse me, sheriff's office and facilities maintenance. This recommendation is to accept the quote from Stanley Convergent Security Solutions Incorporated. This is based on the Sourcewell Contract 030421, and it's in the amount of $424,425. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have, and I recommend approval.
Thank you. Commissioner Howe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just comments and questions. So to the election software, I've talked with the election commissioner, and one of the things that she's going to provide is certification documents for the software level that we're installing. And I did ask questions about how this is done. This, the hardware is essentially a new hard drive on the ballot marking machines that stores the ballot information in terms of, you know, what's displayed to the voter. And it's a new software there that provides a better experience to the voter in terms of being able to put multiple races on the same page. But we don't access the inside of that machine, but the vendor that provided that to us, I guess, is the one that actually opens that up and makes that, that upgrade. Is that, is that correct?
That's correct. The only people who can open those are the certified technicians provided by the vendor, and so ESNS will be on-site to conduct those upgrades.
Okay. And then, so that's a new hard drive, and then there'll be some software upgrade as well. And that's also for the, I guess our DS200s are also being upgraded as well?
Yes, that's correct. They will have new firmware installed as well.
And the way they do that is basically through a, they plug in some type of a phone driver, something that has that software, and they download that and do the update that way.
Yes, correct.
It's not done through a wireless connection or whatever. Okay. So the certification documents for those pieces of software, I would like to make sure I get a copy of that, and I think you indicated that I could get that yesterday, so.
Commissioner, I believe I emailed that to you yesterday, and I do have those with me today. The certification from the EAC, which is the federal certification, took place in July of 2020. The system was subsequently applied for in Kansas. It was independently tested, and then certification in Kansas took place in December of 2021.
Very good. Thank you for those answers, and appreciate your work on this. So I will support that. And I have a question on item number four. I'm wondering, did the Witchshot Eagle, were they, were they presented this opportunity to bid?
Yes, they were, and they did not provide a receipt.
Were they listed here?
They're part of the, let's see, the total of 38 vendors, they were the 38, one of the 38 vendors that we sent it to.
I guess I don't see the 38 vendors listed, I see three.
If you look under item four, the title is, say, "Request Sent to 38 Vendors," in parentheses, "Under Funding for Various Departments." It's like the third.
I do see that, I just, okay. But you do show, you show some of the vendors here that had to bid.
What we do, yes, we show the ones that specifically will send you a notice saying, "We chose not to bid."
Okay.
But we did make the effort to extend it to 38 vendors.
We, the recommendation is to do with Ark Valley News, and I assume we have two, two-year options left on the Derby Informer contract. We're choosing to revisit this at this point and see if we can get a better deal. Is that right? So we have two-year, two one-year options on Derby Informer still?
I believe so, yes.
And the Ark Valley News, in terms of comparison, have we done an annual financial assessment, see what the total cost per year will be, Ark Valley versus Derby Informer? Have we had that analysis done?
No, we have not done a total analysis on the total amount. I think they used the unit pricing. I was not part of the evaluation committee, they may have, I can't speak in behalf of them, but I'm sure they extrapolated some total based on the unit pricing that's been presented to the table.
And I think that the number-one reason to do this in, in print primarily is because the Kansas state statutes require us to do that. But the more important part of this is probably the online part of this. Does Ark Valley News have a website where they post this stuff without a firewall? So it's free for everybody to look at without a firewall?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay. And do you know whether they publish this, notifications once or twice?
They publish on a weekly basis, at 52 weeks per year.
I understand that, but Derby Informer, they publish their, their publications twice, I believe. So, I mean, it's not required, but they do that as a service, so.
I have, that this time when they presented their proposal, they listed publishing weekly.
Okay.
And again, 52 weeks per year.
Okay. So, but, so just to wrap up the comment on this, so to be clear, they do have an online version that's free without, without paying, you can get access to these online notifications, is that correct?
I will verify, but I'm pretty sure, sir.
Okay. I don't know if we can vote on this without that clarification. At least, I'm not willing to vote on this without that clarification. So I may need to make a motion to defer this item if we don't know the answer to that question. Then item number five, we've had a lot of discussion about cameras at JIAK, for example. Are these 33 camera improvements, is this just for the jail only, or is this, what is this for?
This is, we understand it's for, just for the adult detention facility, just the jail. Do we have representative facilities, is that correct, Tanya, that is just for the jail?
That is correct. Andrew Delsis also.
Oh, okay. Andrew, do you have a comment on that, sir?
That is correct. This is just for the jail. The jail, the, the equipment that was installed was installed in 2014 era. This is to replace that equipment that is beyond, it's not beyond its useful life expectancy. And so we're having some issues with some of the recordings over there, and this will resolve some of those issues and replace that equipment.
So with that in mind, did we go to the Technology Review Board and do this in, you know, as far as more a bulk purchase to incorporate these needs with other needs in other parts of our county umbrella? This is very focused on single, single need, but normally we'd like to do this through TRB.
Commissioner, we did not, we did not go through the TRB. This CIP was well before the discussion of taking this through TRB.
Well, it says that it was requested to be on CIP on August 25th, 2021. So not even, you know, what, seven, eight months ago or so, this was added to CIP. And TRB is something that basically we do every year, so I guess I'd just like to know why, why we would not do this along with other, for example, JIAK has great needs, I'm sure that's coming. Would we get a better deal, I would assume, if we would do this in mass rather than in a small part of the county needs?
Well, again, this is just to replace what's happening at the, at the current adult detention facility with cameras that have gone past their useful life. So we're just replacing what's currently not working there. So we didn't take this through TRB because of that. Again, they're just replacements.
I understand that answer. I guess I would say, if we have to replace equipment each and every year, you know, as equipment ages out, and we have, new equipment we have to buy whenever we have to buy that, typically, we'd like to use the TRB, would we not? I mean, in other parts of our county umbrella, we would use the TRB to create, if you will, a composite need for the county.
Sorry to invite myself to the podium here. Lindsay Povrussow, you're CFO. So Commissioner, to your point, CIP and TRB are governed separately, they're different and distinct policies, and right now, the CIP policy does not integrate with TRB. So actually, TRB was designed to look like our CIP policy. So if it is a part of a structure that controls, in this case, cameras, or if it controls a master control system, the way our policy is written today, it would be appropriate for the CIP committee to vote on that and to fund it that way, as opposed to how we fund TRB projects. And we have recently asked Mr. Elpers to join us on the CIP committee, recognizing that as things are going, technology is getting to be more and more a part of our capital improvement process. Does that help?
Well, it does. You know, back when this was originally installed on the jail, it was a major upgrade, and it was millions of dollars.
Yes.
So it wasn't, you know, that was a total rewiring of the jail, okay? And that was obviously CIP, because we upgraded the entire system, and it was a structural change to the, to the facility. This is upgrading equipment that has only lasted eight years. Does it really qualify to be a CIP?
It does. There are, there are two, so whenever we are maintaining an asset that was acquired through a CIP process and is of $25,000 or more, that is how our policy is written today to be a CIP. That doesn't mean we can't go back and revisit the policy, this is the commissioner's policies. But for now, that is how we're governed, and that's what we're following.
My final question on this, was this budgeted in our 2022 budget?
Yes.
Okay. Also, I've got to support number five. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion here to adopt the recommendations of Board of Bids and Contracts, one through five, except for minus, except for number four. And I would like to defer that for answers, whatever, whatever those answers come to us, I'd be glad to support that at that time.
Repeat number four.
Number four is publication of legal notices, sir.
Well, let me remind everyone, publication of legal notices, that we had it on our legislative agenda for a couple of years, that we wanted the option not to have to do this, because we do, if you pick up your phone and you have the Sedgwick County app on your phone, you can get all of the legal notices right on your phone. If you go to our website, you'll be able to see that all of our legal notices are on every website, on our website. So I don't really understand why we defer that. Can you clarify?
Okay. So thank you for the question. So again, I've supported an efficiency change in our laws that would allow us to do online only. But Kansas statutes requires publication, and that has not changed. And so we have to publish in a physical newspaper somewhere in the county. And so this changes it from the Derby Informer to the Ark Valley News, which is fine. But my question is, are we, are we apples and apples or apples and oranges? Because Derby Informer does provide two publications for every one of our legal notifications. They are online without a paywall, and they've been good to work with. We used to use the Derby, the Witchshot Eagle, but again, so I'm a little surprised they didn't bid on this. But nevertheless, I want efficiency for the taxpayer, for sure, but I want to make sure we're not, you know, moving in a way that makes this less available to the public when they're used to, you know, online type of stuff. I understand this through the county, but the, the online by the newspaper is also necessary. So thank you, Chairman.
Well, thank you. And you've got a motion, I don't know that I would second it, and I don't think I'd vote for it at this time, because I am looking for efficiency in our county. And that's what this Boards and Bids and Contracts was looking for, was efficiency in our county. We have gone on record as saying that we don't even need it being published. We couldn't get it through the legislature, because the small communities out in, in western Kansas rely on these publications in order to, to stay alive. We don't need it for the, our newspapers here to stay alive. So I don't know why we're even arguing that point, so Commissioner Cruz?
Mr. Chairman, if I could say something. I just had Linda Baker call Ark Valley News, they do not have a firewall, so that's at least what they're telling us. And it doesn't make sense that they, that these papers would have a firewall for legal publications anyway. We use the Eagle for a number of years, and they have a firewall, obviously, for most of their news, but I bet they don't for, city uses them, I bet they don't for their legal publications, so. I don't think that's going to be an obstacle in approving this bid. I don't think that's going to be an obstacle in approving this bid, but you can certainly delay it.
Thank you. And Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you. My, my question is around this. What is the statute that requires us to publish these? And when was it written? Do we know?
Good morning, Commissioners. Kirk Sponso, Assistant County Counselor. So the statute in question was actually quoted in the board bids and contracts document as related specifically to the official county newspaper. It's going to be KSA sixty-four, one-zero-one. And it looks like it was originally enacted in eighteen ninety-one, and it was most recently amended in nineteen ninety-eight. And specifically for some of the requirements that are related to the official county newspaper, they have four components listed. The first one is that it's published at least weekly fifty times a year, and has been so published for at least one year. Second is that it is entered at the post office as a periodical class mail matter county in Kansas. Third requirement is that it's a general paid circulation on a daily, weekly, monthly, or yearly basis. And the fourth requirement is that it's published in the county that is publishing the official publication.
Okay. So just a technical question around Derby publishing this. What are, like, on their website, they've been, they've been publishing this on their website for a number of years. Is that correct? Hal says yes over here. Okay, so, I guess I, I wonder, what are their, like, the page views? I wonder how many people actually go to this. They would have that information. I, can, can we, can we get that info? And the reason why I ask this is because I think it helps us build a case that we are moving toward a technologically-driven society of where people do consume information in a different way. And understanding that Kansas is not the same in all counties, I wonder if there would be something, you know, if it would, uh, we could put population limits or some sort of other way to still, um, ensure that these legal notices are printed, understanding our counties are different. So that's probably a larger discussion around maybe writing something, a new statute, that might work for Kansas, but understanding how we all consume information now. I mean, if the original statute was written in eighteen ninety-one and then changed in nineteen ninety-eight, I mean, goodness, we're still, I mean, it's twenty-twenty-two, so we're still even, technology progresses so quickly that it's a little out of date, in my, in my opinion. So I guess I'd like to have a conversation around that after, I will be supporting this today. So, those are my comments.
Thank you. Commissioner Meitzner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just had one comment, but now I've got two. Election Commissioner, uh, thank you, um, for what, I was in the meeting with you yesterday, and I think all the commissioners have been briefed on all of the, uh, the system upgrade that you so thoroughly explained. And, uh, thank you, Commissioner Hal, for, for re-explaining all of our meetings and all of that. So, uh, I, my only, my only suggestion is if, I know you're supplying some, uh, documents about licensing or whatever. Can you, I would suggest, would you please, uh, provide that to, commit, to, uh, Manager Stoltz, who can distribute it to all of us, so we all get copied on it? Or copy us all and copy, uh, Mr. Papoun and, uh, and Tom Stoltz? So that's my only comment on that item.
Absolutely, Commissioner. I will do that.
Okay. That way, it's a chain of command that we all get well. So thank you on that. And then on the other one, uh, I think on the newspaper or the publication, I'm, uh, I think the bid board has done a thorough job. I look at all the categories. I don't see any reason to delay that decision personally. So that's my comments. Thank you. Chairman?
Thank you. Commissioner Hal?
Okay, thank you, Chairman. I, I can see that the, the per-item costs are lower across the entire table here. So obviously, the fiscal analysis would be less for the same amount of work. So that's, that's a moot point. I don't see a delay, a need for a delay, knowing that these are the same apples and apples, as was described to me. I will withdraw my motion. Thank you.
Very good. I don't see any other comments, uh, and Commissioner Hal has withdrawn his comments, so I move that we, uh...
He withdrew his motion. You said he withdrew his comments. He withdrew his motion. I'm just, thanks for letting me.
I move we approve the recommendations of boards and bids and contracts. We have a motion on the second any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Hal?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Madam Clerk, next item.
Consent agenda.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tom Stoltz, County Manager's Office, recommending approval of consent items L through AF. This morning, I want to publicly notate items O and P. Though contractual and mundane in fashion, they are employment agreements for our deputy, uh, medical examiner's office. So I want to commend Dr. Stedman for, in a very tight job market, going out and recruiting people to come in. We have a backlog, our, in our coroner's office, and she is doing everything she can to, to put contracts forward. So she does have two new contracts. I just wanted to state that publicly for the commission and for, uh, for the citizens. So I ask you to approve the consent list today.
Thank you. I appreciate those comments. And, uh, Dr. Stedman is in the office, in the boardroom, so if anyone has any questions. But I appreciate her being here today. I move that we approve consent items, uh, Lima through Alpha Foxtrot. We have a motion to the second any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Hal?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye. Next item, please.
Legislative issues.
Tanya, what you got for us today? I know that they're all in recess right now.
They are, sir. Morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Tanya Cole, Assistant County Manager. As you mentioned, uh, Kansas Legislature reached first adjournment early Saturday morning, and they will return for veto session on Monday, April twenty-fifth. When they return, they will be debating the budget that was passed prior to their adjournment, which prioritized, uh, pay raises for state employees, public safety, and social service investments, higher education spending, and more funding for water. Additional spending decisions will be made in the omnibus budget. I thought I would, um, provide some highlights of bills that passed, um, and specifically some of those that we've discussed over the last few weeks. Senate substitute for House Bill twenty-four sixteen that passed the Senate and would have required counties to provide property tax refund to businesses that were restricted or closed during the pandemic, that has failed to be adopted. Instead, ARPA dollars of up to fifty million are being set aside for reimbursements. And as you recall, we provided opposition testimony to that last week. We sent that up to the Kansas Legislature. Senate sub, uh, substitute for House Bill twenty-two thirty-nine that passed the Senate unanimously in the House, uh, hundred-and-three to ten. This bill includes, um, several income tax provisions, as well as the golden years tax freeze. We've talked about this, the revenue-neutral rate changes that establishes a property tax revenue-neutral rate complaint process, authorizing the county clerk to limit the amount of ad valorem taxes to be levied in central, excuse me, in certain circumstances, establishing a deadline for budgets to be filed with the Director of Accounts and Reports, and requiring roll-call votes and publication of information. Also passed is, and we've talked about this several time, uh, several times, House substitute for Senate Bill nineteen. That's the nine-eight-eight suicide prevention and mental health crisis hotline. Uh, Senate, Senate substitute for House Bill twenty-fifty-six that passed the Senate twenty-one to seventeen. The House has not voted on the measure yet, and if passed, a veto by the governor is anticipated. This, uh, requires advanced voting ballots to be received by seven PM on election day, as well as changes, uh, the deadline to register to vote, cutting down the number of days prior to an election in which you can register. And it limits the number of drop boxes that can be placed in a county, making one per thirty thousand of, uh, registered voters. And then the two public health bills that we've talked about, uh, quite a lot, that's Senate Bill four-eighty-nine that deals with vaccines and infectious diseases, removing KDHE authority over infectious disease, as well as a provision that prevents health officers from requiring anyone to quarantine because of an infectious disease. And then Senate Bill five forty-one, which changes school attendance vaccination language, shifting public emergency powers to school boards and community colleges away from the local health officer and commissions, and creates a number of new vaccine exceptions and limits BOCC authority in some instances. So, of course, there has been a lot of bills, um, passed by the Kansas Legislature, but, of course, I just wanted to highlight, uh, those that we've talked about, as I mentioned, over the last several weeks. Typically, we will have our Monday meetings with Watkins Strategies on Monday. They are in DC this week, so we will have that meeting with them tomorrow. So I will be able to, um, perhaps give you an update on that Tuesday at staff meeting, since we do not have a commission meeting next Wednesday. And then we have a meeting tomorrow with Jim Davenport, um, with Thorn Run. And so I have been working on edits to our federal legislative platform. He's also provided some additions, um, to the, that platform. And so I'm hoping to be, bring that back to you next week for discussion and adoption of the federal platform. So I'm happy to answer any questions if I can, and if you'd like to give me any direction on legislative issues, I'm happy to take that up.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Uh, one thing about your discussions with, uh, Mr. Davenport. Yesterday, we had the Transportation Coalition meeting, and, uh, the, uh, the different projects are in tiers. And the Northwest Expressway is, uh, in tier one, the highest you can go. Problem is, there's no funding there to be able to move that forward, and it's about a half a billion dollars to move it forward. One of the things we brought up at, uh, at the Transportation Coalition yesterday is that, uh, there is some mega, uh, projects money out there. And when they say talking about mega projects, they're talking about ones that cost a half a million dollars or more. And this certainly falls within that mega project definition. So when you're talking to our legislative lobbyist in Washington DC, find out where the, they're at and what we need to do in order to be able to move this into the mega project list.
Okay.
Okay. Any other comments on legislative briefings? I don't see anything. Thank you, Tom. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Next item, please.
Committee reports.
Thank you. Commissioners, anything? Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to mention that Exploration Place has a new permanent exhibit that is opening April twentieth called Health Inside Out. It's going to be really fun. When you walk in, or I guess when you walk down the hallway, and there's that big open space that had puzzles and everything, it'll be in that area. It's one that is created by Exploration Place from the beginning to the end, and it's going to have different arcade-type theme, different activities to do that all focuses around health, physical, and mental. So I'm really excited about that opening, and that will, again, be open to the public on April twentieth.
Thank you. Commissioner Meitzner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And you mentioned the Coalition for, the Transportation Coalition. Just, uh, I'm very comfortable that that, that large group, uh, we reshuffled a couple of projects. We eliminated one that was no more relevant, and, uh, and so, uh, I think we're, that, that continues to be a, a good, uh, community and regional-wide, uh, group that helps focus on the, uh, on the world of KDOT and federal and state projects and related to transportation. So thank you for your comment about that.
Thank you. And along that line, we've got local consult. Uh, all the commissioners are invited to local consult coming up. It's going to be held at, uh, at the Air Museum, I think, on the fourteenth. So if you haven't signed up for that, you need to get signed up, because that's an important, uh, time when we can advocate for those projects that are on that, uh, list of important projects. Anything else from committee reports? I don't see anything. Madam Clerk, next item?
Other.
Any Commissioners have any? Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. This weekend, a lot of things are happening. Evergreen is hosting its ribbon cutting at twenty-six oh-one North Arkansas at ten AM. So the community center was just revitalized. It's going to be a great event. Also, the Society of Women Engineers is hosting a free engineering expo, um, at Century Two from nine to three. And then I just wanted to mention, next week, we will not be having a Board of County Commissioners meeting, because some of us will be attending the Mental Health Summit, um, the Kansas Mental Health Summit in Topeka. It will feature local and national speakers who will educate us and inform attendees about how each stakeholder in the process can help improve the court's response to mental health issues. So, uh, just reiterate and thank Commissioners for, um, really focusing on the building of our mental health court here and veterans' courts. Those specialty courts, um, have seen great results, and, um, we can build upon our drug court that we already have here. So I'm excited to attend this Kansas Mental Health Summit next week and appreciate the fact that we could shift our county commissioner meetings around, uh, for, for attendance. So, thank you, Chairman. That's my comments.
Thank you. Commissioner Meitzner?
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. Uh, just a, a shout-out to, uh, it's Captain Obvious here, but my congratulations to the, uh, Kansas University basketball team. And, uh, it was just kind of fun to, to see on the social media. I had no idea, well, like, a lot of people that, that we knew, that I knew, were down there and experienced it in New Orleans. And I was reminded, a few years ago, I, I was fortunate enough to go to Atlanta when Wichita State made the Final Four, and, uh, that is truly an experience, and it's just a great break in, uh, emotional celebration that, uh, that this state and the community needed. And, uh, so my congratulations to the, to the Kansas University Jayhawks.
Thank you very much for those comments. And I know Lindsey Povrussow is still dancing, so congratulations to, to KU. Any other comments and other? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, next item?
Executive session.
Commissioner Lopez?
I move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session for forty-five minutes until eleven fifty for the preliminary discussion of the acquisition of real property related to the purchase of a county building, and that the Board of County Commissioners returns to this room from executive session at eleven fifty.
Thank you. I second that motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Hal?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye. We are in recess.
Aye.
We are in recess.[442.31]
In the back when we're ready to go live. Good morning, everyone, and welcome back to our Board of County Commissioners for 6th of April. I'd like to let you know we've returned from executive session and no binding actions was taken. Is there anything else that needs to be -- come before the board today? See nothing? We're adjourned.
Did you get a copy of that?
Yes.
Okay.